...incorporated. And he reiterated some public comment he had made in, early in July, to which staff had responded. So, we are bringing them to you. In our analysis, does not represent a mandate or cost to school districts, but again, it puts us in compliance with federal law.
Okay. Do we have a speaker on this at all? Okay. And is there any board comment? Nope? Okay. The motion would be to adopt the proposed regulations regarding withholding funds to enforce special education compliance and direct staff to complete the rulemaking package and submit it to the Office of Administrative Law for approval. Janine, second. By Bonnie, all those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item 25. It's a, okay, information and do we need anything? No, we're, thank you, Tom, very much. We're okay. Okay. Interested time. All right. Item 26. Yes, we are.
Good afternoon. I'm Scott Hanen, Director. Are you ready?
Just one moment. I'm so sorry, Scott. Are you okay with that, Reed? Okay. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Welcome.
Scott Hanen, Director, School Fiscal Services Division in the Department. And we allocate funding for a number of categoricals, one including instructional materials. And Julie Klein manages the staff that allocate those funds, and she'll address this issue for you.
Good afternoon. My name is Julie Klein. I'm with the School Fiscal Services Division. I'm here today to present, Board, item 26, which requests your approval for the proposed allocation of instructional materials funds for fiscal year 2004-05. This request for approval is submitted annually to the State Board of Education, and your approval is required by law to allocate these funds to local educational agencies. Total funding for instructional materials in the State Budget Act is $363 million. The funds requiring Board approval total $333 million. That includes $550,000 set aside for accessible instructional materials for visually impaired students, and $332,450,000 to be distributed to local educational agencies on the basis of prior year enrollment, as reported on the Seabeds Report, at approximate rate of This resolution does not include $30 million of instructional materials funding, which are designed for English learners, or the $138 million appropriate Senate Bill 1108 as a result of the Williams lawsuit. Board approval is not required for those allocations.
Okay. Thank you. I like this item. I think this is great to see an increase in funding, and I want to thank our governor for increasing the funding to our instructional materials. This is really important place to put our resources, and I know, as we are committed, so is the governor, to getting those textbooks in the districts, and this is just great news. So, thank you. And do I have any public comment? Board comment on this?
I have a question.
Yes?
Do we have a textbook liaison or something in the instructional materials on the Board?
The way that the Board has worked it, in a variety of different ways, but right now, it's by subject area.
Oh. Well, my question concerns cost. When we spend big dollars like this, we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're not getting ripped off. Who looks into that?
And I know Tom is out there. I can see him rubbing his chin. There are cost factors engaged in it, and I know that's been quite a conversation. So, Tom, you want to address that?
So, the question being, is there oversight in pricing and things like that?
(laughing).
Yeah. Ripoff is a technical term, and I had to put in layman's terms. We have a price list and order form, and that actually, which we keep on our website. It's something we used to send out hard copy, but you can do it according to subject area, according to grade level, according to your needs, and it actually lists the price that district should be paying for the instructional materials themselves.
Is there any comparison to other states, or is there a way to compare?
Well, it's a guaranteed most favored nation status. So, all the states, the way the industry's organized, is every state gets the best pricing it is. And so, it ends up being price control across the whole country. Nobody gets a deal.
Right.
And in fact, what they do is they guarantee, and so therefore, and it's fairly tightly controlled about little extras, like extra training suddenly becomes, you know, an illegal price break, and extra everything. And so, it's, the good side is, it's amazingly consistent across the states.
Because it, all states are politicized, and only about half of the states are adoption states. But it's all politicized. They have the same dynamics we do about saving money. And so, it's fairly tightly controlled in that way, and it's, and so, the, what we, the presentation we had, I know maybe the last, was it last meeting, the one meeting before, was really interesting, because, you know, we were spending, or we did spend then, a bunch of time on this $50 or $100 per student. But in comparison to the $6,000 per student, $7,000 total, you know, it's a fairly small part, and perhaps even ought to be bigger. In other words, better materials, et cetera. We always want a deal, but it's really difficult because of this most favored nation that every state demands.
And it's also internal to California. So, a small district has to get the same deal as, say, as a large district.
And the next question is, how do we, what's the insurance that the districts actually spend their money on instructional materials that are given to them?
The audit guide.
Is the money given to the district, I understand it's based on 2003 census, right, or a roll? But then, is the money sent, a big check, or a little check, depending on the size of their district or their school? How does that, how does it work? I mean, we're not talking about a, even though I heard what you said, Reed, that we're talking about $52 as opposed to $6,000, what, you know, pays for other things. It's still a big chunk of money when you look at it as an aggregate. So, what's the process?
The process for determining the rate.
And the purchasing, from the other end.
That's correct. It is purchased at the local level. And this, well, the responsibility in School Fiscal Services Division is to allocate the funds out to the LEAs. And what we do, we determine that rate, and we apply that rate on a per pupil basis back out to the LEAs. And as far as how they purchase those materials, that's not in my scope.
Okay.
And it's different K through A high school?
Right.
What's a categorical program? So, I would assume the answer is yes.
Let's talk about the audit a little bit, because how, in practical terms, how often does that really happen, and who controls it?
Well, every school district's required to have an annual audit, and in the audit, you have a number of programs, and instructional materials is in the audit. And so, you have procedures, compliant requirements, that your, hopefully, chosen auditors must go through to see that you spent the funds for that program. Well, they're private auditors selected by the district, approved by the State Controller's Office, and those audits get reviewed by the State Controller's Office.
The only step that we're not telling you is, we'll approve two or three different providers for a given grade level, and then they sell, they have to have a sales force and go into every district and try to sell to the district the benefits of one versus the other. And then, the district will make a decision. And that selling cost is, has to get built into the textbook cost for the publisher to make money. So, they have to go all around and do these, and it's not the same political selling job as it is to us for an adoption, but, you know, it's somewhat like that, which is selling to a school district is its own art.
And isn't the State Board's responsibility, or the Department of Ed's responsibility to get the results of these audits to see that each district is actually spending the money they were given for what they were supposed to?
Yes, we have staff in the department that go through every finding of every audit of a district to make sure that there's a correction, corrective action plan on everyone.
But that's for all categorical programs? Nothing unique about textbooks?
Right. Or whatever included in the audit guide.
And also, we only pay for textbooks that have been a Board approved. If you want to use instructional materials that are not approved by the Board and standards aligned, then you're not going to get money to buy those textbooks.
Any other board comments, questions? No? Do we have any speakers on this? Are we okay? Okay. Then, the motion would be to approve the Instruction Materials Fund tentative encumbrances and allocations for 2004-05 by adopting the resolution identified as attachment two in the agenda materials. Have a motion. Reed, second. Ricky! All right. And all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. We are moving right along to item 27. Okay. The school bus.
Good afternoon. John Green with the Office of School Transportation. In July, we came to the Board, and the Board approved the continuation of the rulemaking process for the school bus, school pupil activity bus lap shoulder belt regulation. We entered into a 45-day comment period. We received two written comments, one from Norco Corona School District, one from the Child's Advocacy Institute. We also held a public hearing. That was yesterday. It concluded yesterday afternoon at 3:00, and public comment, written comment concluded yesterday at 5:00. We have reviewed the comments written by both the school district and the institute, and feel that the regulation as proposed should remain unchanged, and we're asking that the Board move on with the rulemaking process.
All right. Short and sweet. Right. Any public comments on this? And, okay. Oh, you mean the written comments?
During the, during the.
This in the blue?
The school district comment were basically revolved around the original legislation in 1999, and what the need for a regulation was. The regulation was required in the 1999 legislation and statute for the Department to adopt the regulation. They also asked for us to look at some of the other issues and be more specific in nature on such items as how to store the school bus seat belt, lap shoulder belt, when it's not in use. We didn't pursue that any farther, because to get more specific would make that particular regulation cumbersome. For instance, there's probably more than 100 combinations of school bus seats, seat belts, and to be specific on each individual type of belt system and how to store that would again make that piece of regulation so cumbersome and so unwieldy that the Department felt we left it simply with, at the manufacturer's instructions and discretion on how to store that properly.
Can I ask a question?
Please, Jeanne.
First of all, the restraint systems, all new buses are going, they're going to have this restraint system, but then, there's no, nothing mandating, mandating that we put restraint systems in old buses, right?
That's correct.
Okay. No retro end. Secondly, are the restraint systems designed for two per seat or three per seat? Because most school districts use three per seat because of the cost effectiveness and don't have the buses to do two per seat, so.
Well, that's correct. There are seat companies that will manufacture a seat with a three-position seat with lap shoulder belts, and it'll actually be a 3-2 configuration. So, on one side of the aisle, you're going to have a three-position seat. On the other side of the aisle, you're going to have a two-position seat. And that's because of the Title 13 requirement to maintain a 12-inch aisle and the width of the bus itself. So, we're restricted. We can't actually go any larger with the width of the vehicle. That would give us three, three combinations. So, the maximum's 3-2.
We have to buy more buses.
Okay. Ruth?
Yeah. Was there ever discussion about retrofitting and requiring them to retrofit old buses?
Yes. During the original legislation in 1999, there was discussion about retrofitting, and Assembly of the state at the time who introduced the legislation did not want to do that because of the mandated costs of requiring buses that are already in service to have those systems.
All right. How many buses are in service without, in percentage-wise, without seat belts?
Right now, there is no requirement for a lap shoulder belt, or any lap, or any belt system in a school bus. The Type 2 buses went into effect July 1 of this year, and next year, July 1 of 2005 for the larger buses. So, it'd be a very small percentage of the 26,000 school buses that actually have some kind of belt system now.
And what are the reported injuries in terms, I mean, what is, what are the statistics about bus accidents with children with or without restraint?
Right. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration put out a report. They did a study. It came out in May of 2002. They predict that the inclusion of lap shoulder belts on school buses could possibly save one life nationally per year. That's it. In California, we haven't had a fatal school bus accident with a student dying inside since the early 90s. Knock on wood.
Definitely knock on wood. Ricky?
Just a quick question. I see here that there's an exemption to these provisions in the case of an emergency. Is there a proper definition that currently exists today for any emergency?
Correct. There is. It's already in the education code.
It is? Okay. And what is that, just for our reference?
I would have to look that up. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Any other further comment? No Board, I mean, excuse me, no public comment on this one, Deborah?
Can I just find the point out?
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, John. And the motion would be to adopt the proposed regulations regarding school bus lap shoulder belts and direct staff to complete the rulemaking package and submit it to the Office of Administrative Law for approval. Do I have a motion? Reed. Suzanne, seconds. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Onto item 28.
Good afternoon. Carrick Ashley, Director for Data Management Division. I'd like to wish my oldest son a happy 16th birthday. Like all typical 16-year-olds, he watches a lot of public access television. I'm here for presenting items 28 and 29, approval of the consolidated applications. Let me give you a little background, so you understand what it is that you are approving. The consolidated application is made up of 17 different programs, some of them state, some of them federal, so that districts do not have to apply to each and every different program office in the department to apply for these funds. We put them all into one application. It's an application that the Data Management Division does. It's software that these districts and charter schools download from our website. They complete it, and they submit it electronically. With these 17 programs, it does represent a substantial amount of money each year, about 3.2 billion. It's quite a bit of money. They do it in two parts. They submit the first part at the end of June for the next school year, and then there's a second part that comes out shortly after, when I say shortly, it's a couple months, after we have a state budget, so that we can actually provide two districts their entitlements for these programs. And then, they tell us which schools are getting certain funds. All of these programs are considered entitlement programs or formula-driven programs, so none of them are on a competitive basis. They're not competing for these funds. As long as they meet all their requirements, they are entitled to them, to use that term. So, what you have before you are, is two Board items, the first of which is item 28. This is actually two consolidated applications from the previous school year. They're two charter schools. What happens in, throughout the year, what the law allows is for a charter school to apply for these funds later than normal school districts would. The School Fiscal Services Division calculates and holds back some funds for startup charter schools. There is no statutory deadline for them to apply for these funds. These two charter schools, direct funded charter schools, did submit their applications before the end of the fiscal year, which would have been June 30. We didn't, I didn't want to do a last-minute Board item in July. I prefer to do regular Board items, and so, we held them off until now. The two charter schools before you are Benjamin Holt and West Fresno.
Thank you so much. Very helpful. Okay. Public comment? Oh, good. Okay. Well, the motion would be to approve the list of 2003, sorry? Okay. Fine, fine, great. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries.
Item 29 is for the same consolidated applications for the current school year, 2004, 2005. You have before you 1,165 applications. That represents all but four regular school districts that have submitted their application. It does, there are about 33 applications that will be presented to you in November. Some of those may be, we may recommend conditional approval. So, normally, on these consolidated applications, we have two types of approval. One, regular approval. Two, conditional approval, in which you, as a Board, place conditions on the approval. Those conditions may be that they have to meet certain benchmarks, especially in terms of meeting compliance requirements before they're allowed to get one or more funding sources. We have none of those conditional approvals before you this month, but you can expect that there will be some next month. We pulled those off the agenda, the 33 potential ones, so that we can take a closer look to see how serious the compliance issues are, and to provide a more complete report for you on their status in November. So, all we have before you today are the regular approvals for '04, '05.
Can you just, and I want it to be very short, but there are obviously so many LEAs that you're looking at, and your approval process by which you, the oversight that you provide, and for all this money, I mean, what is quickly the process that you go through at the department level to ensure a proper use of the funds?
Okay. So, I should probably first step back and say what you are approving for these 17 programs, and of course, districts may apply for one to 17, to any number in between. So, depending on what programs they're applying for, the program offices take this approval of the consolidated application, add to it any requirements they have for their specific programs, and then, once they know that the LEA has met all of the requirements for the program, that individual program office contacts Fiscal Services Division to give them the okay to send out funding. So, let me give you an example. Title IV is one of the programs in the consolidated application. Besides the consolidated application, Title IV also requires, of course, that the district, or the direct funded charter schools, submit an LEA plan. But along with those two requirements, they also have a requirement for an annual report. So, once the program office knows that the consolidated application is approved, the LEA plan is approved, and the annual report has been submitted and approved, then the Title IV office goes to Fiscal Services and says, "Okay, this LEA, or this list of LEAs may receive their Title IV funding for the year."
Okay.
So, then, there's also, of course, a compliance monitoring program that I'm sure you're well aware is in the process of being revised, but many of these same programs in the consolidated application are reviewed as part of the current coordinated compliance review process.
And certainly, there are some of the bigger, for example, Title I. I mean, that's a very big ticket item, right? I mean, most of the dollars, a lot of dollars are directed in that. Is there more oversight over that as opposed to another title, which I can't think of right now, but something that's not as important?
Sure, there is. And the application itself is a bit, might be a bit of a misnomer, in that it's more than just applying for funds. They actually, through the consolidated application, they report what they are doing, or what they have done the previous year. So, it's combined as part of the consolidated application. They tell us what, how many program participants, depending on the program requirements, maybe, you know, by gender, they might break it down, by how many migrant students receive Title I, how many special ed students receive Title I. In the consolidated application, they must tell us which school is receiving which, how much money, and they have to do it by a formula-driven program. There are over 600 error checks embedded into this application, so that when they go to submit it, it has to meet certain requirements. So, if they have to reserve, which most LEAs do, 1% for Title I parent involvement, they indicate for us in the application what that 1% is for parent involvement, and then they also show us which schools and which amounts it's going to. So, there's a lot of monitoring that goes in actually to the application itself.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Board comments?
I would just like to say that I really appreciate your report, because not only did you give us the history, you're explaining a process that for us, for me, for the first time really seeing this, it makes it very, very clear, and I think the idea of having this on app, if you will, is like really, really smart, and it shows that we are doing something in a very expedient but thorough, thorough manner. So, I appreciate it.
Just a quick question. On page 19, I noticed two schools that are getting huge entitlement. Is this a misprint, or is Lafayette getting $79,530.57 per student, and La Canyada getting $20,434 per student? Or is that a misprint? Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Page 17?
19.
19. We were looking at Lafayette?
Yeah. It says they're 2,003, 2,004 entitlement per low-income student. It said 79,530.
I.
I just wonder if the misprint is off.
I would venture to guess I'll be talking to someone tomorrow morning about this number.
And also, La Canyada's 20,000. There's a couple of them in here, and one that's 13,000. I just thought you might want to.
The 79,000 is, looks definitely to be in there.
Okay.
These numbers, I should also just make a remark, that these numbers are indicated from what they received last year. They're star-dated from last year to give you an idea of the amount of money that's going, and then, we calculate this entitlement per low-income student. That's not a formula that's done for any specific funding. It's just to let you know about how much money each district is getting, and we actually get most of them correct. That could be.
Right. So, this is okay, what you're asking us to do? Okay.
And La Canyada, maybe? We approve it as corrected.
Corrected, yeah.
Okay.
This is a report for your information. I'll move the staff recommendation as corrected.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're on to proposed consent items. That'd be items 30, 31, 32, 33, and 36. And we have presenter on this? I can read them again. 30, 31, 32, 33, and 36. All right. That's fine, then.
Proposed consent items?
Second.
Second. By Janine. Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes.
Can I just?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were.
I didn't have a question. No, I was trying to whip through here to see where I'd written a note, and I just wanted to know if on item 30, and this could come back later, since we've already passed it, on the principal training program, do we track the trained principals and evaluate their performance? That's my question.
It's a good one.
No, we don't.
Okay.
You know, I should expand on that a little.
It's 430. You don't really have to.
No, I'll be very quick. It's not, it's a local Board issue. They do have principal evaluations that they do as part of their performance, and in fact, that had been a topic of conversation for many months in another context. And so, they do get evaluated, just not by us. So, if you're trying to look at value added by the principal based on this, we don't have that in here.
Ruth, I also know the programs due to sunset, not this year, but next year.
This one?
466, but there is a proposal to try to extend it and refine it. So, it was more of an emphasis on the site principals rather than perhaps central office.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Onto, yeah, onto item 34, and we have Sue back here for 466.
Good afternoon. We'd like to recommend that the State Board of Education consider comments received during the 45-minute public comment, 45-day, 45-minute. Jeez. Forty, blah, blah, blah. Okay, 45-day. A little pointy. Comment period at the public hearing and during the 15-day comment period and take action to adopt these regulations. And so let me give a little background, first of all. We brought forward these regulations in, at the May board meeting, and they were put out for public comment. And what the regulations addressed was the idea of teachers just participating in the training once. And for those of you that are new to the world of AB466, AB466 has been a very wonderful program for school districts in that what it has provided is sustained professional learning for teachers and paraprofessionals. Too often in the past, teachers got at best a day or two of training on new instructional materials, or they got some content-specific training that they would then have to figure out how to put back into context in their classroom. AB466 has changed that. The first 40 hours of AB466 training focuses on the materials that teachers are going to use in the areas of mathematics and English language arts. They teach the teachers how to use the materials, how to be effective in their classroom. The 80 hours that follow of the 120 hours are hours that can be further tailored to the needs of the teachers at the local schools. Some of the things that have been done is a focus on English language learners and how to meet the needs of that population, how to use assessment data to plan your instruction and plan what it is that happens with your students. I, if I go back to my former life in Elk Grove, AB466 had a tremendous impact on the teachers in Elk Grove. High school math teachers, in a very incredible way, because they found the training so powerful, would come to all-day sessions on Saturdays. Now, I was a former high school, high school math teacher, and that's not something they'd give up lightly are their Saturdays, but they found the training to be remarkable. They found the opportunity for collaboration to be excellent. And so 466 training has been invaluable. What these regulations do is put some limitations on the repetition of how often you can repeat the training. And it went through, when it went out at first, comments were received about not being able to repeat the training at all. And so there are some areas that the training can now be repeated. For instance, if you have a change in adoption, if you have a change in grade level of two or more grades, or a change in teaching assignment. And that, that makes perfect sense. If you have a teacher that's moving from third grade to fifth grade, they're going from teaching students how to read, for instance, to teaching students how to use reading to learn, and that's a whole different focus and the materials look very different. We received no further comments with the 15-day comment period within our office. And so at this point, I'll pause.
And I'd just like to echo your comments in the field and locally, anyway. I've heard great things about 466 and the valuable training it provides, so I hope we continue with that.
So this, can I ask a question? This year and next, about how many teachers will go through 466?
As of June 30th, 2,004, 61,616 teachers had gone through.
Cumulatively. And what's our rate going forward?
Well, going forward, we, we don't know because they don't, we don't know who's going to apply for it until they apply to be, to receive their money.
How much budget do we have if there's plenty of demand?
We have $31.7 million that's allocated per year. Last year, for the first time, we went beyond the $31.7 million. We overspent by about 3.5 million, which came off this year's allocation. It, which is a good thing in one sense, but it does give you concern about, first of all, it's sunsetting, because we don't want it to sunset, because clearly there's, there's a very big need for this training.
When does it sunset?
It sunsets in June 2006. Same as AB75, yes. And I appreciate that there were no public comments, but I felt that it was important to let you know that the Department of Finance has talked with us and indicated that they are not happy with your regulations. The good news is that they don't, there's no mandated cost here, and so they don't have approval or approval rights of them, so you don't have to take their comments. But I thought I'd share them with you anyway, and that is that they would prefer to see the money revert rather than allow for that expenditure when a teacher changes from first grade to eighth grade, to allow them to go through retraining. They just as soon have that money go into the reversion account and use it for other, other ideas.
I think it's important to note, this is a voluntary program. So it's those teachers and districts that want to, that want to do the right thing. I agree, because it's been so valuable in the field. This is voluntary, so the fact is that we, if there are teachers that want to go and get more training to learn how to do their job better and help with kids, I think we have to support that. So I'm very much in favor of 466. I wish the, I wish the retraining, those teachers that wanted to go back and take a second professional development course, had that opportunity. But unfortunately, there's some talk of this reversion of funds and that option is no longer available. Personally, I feel that's a mistake, but that's the way it is.
Sue, since Ray, you've historically always taken the Department of Finance position, because it's often the prudent position is, you know, or let's say the responsible position, which just because money's allocated doesn't mean we should spend it. It seems like in this particular case, that you think the policy benefits significantly outweigh your natural conservatism about wanting to save the state money.
I know it is a big shock, because I generally have always touted the Department of Finance as one.
Well, they're often right, and in this case, you think the policy benefits.
And I will tell you this, that it's, it's a different view of how you determine how much money is going to be spent. And to me, you determine the pool of money, and it's there, and they can draw it down. And I don't think that necessarily, and there, so I may have some difference of opinion with some that the teacher should just automatically go through it three times, but I do think that if you've got money left over in that pool, and a teacher's going from first grade to eighth grade, where reading is absolutely different, that that money is well-spent, especially with respect to what we've done in the Williams case, what we're doing with state, program improvement, they all hinge on this professional development.
I just wanted to add a very tangible example. Our students, our teachers that have been trained in the past prior to being sanctioned and having a state team, and they were 466-trained for materials. As a result of being, of working with the state team, they have changed their adoption because they had older materials, and unless we adopt these regulations, they are then not entitled to reimbursement for that training, and that's a very tangible.
Right. And especially in deciles one to three schools. So I think that that outweighs finance's objection, and so my suggestion to you is that you adopt the regs the way they are.
Right, and.
No move.
Question. Do we allow, do we allow in the reg, refresh my memory, in the regs, also if, another reason to retrain is if a teacher's going to be in a leadership position, where they're going to have to, you know, is that allowable in this? No? Okay, just, and back to Ruth's comment from, there's, certainly there are much better ways to spend some of the money we spend. I agree with that. But when you have something like 466, we have to spend smarter. I mean, so when we find something that actually increases academic achievement, that has to be funded. So, anyway, we have the motion, we have everything, all in favor, yes, okay.
We talked earlier about being proactive with the legislature. Is not having the sunset and extending it next year a viable option, or is that, or from a budget standpoint, that's part of the reauthorization and it's not openable, or?
Ray, before you go, will you take care of that?
Is it a viable option for us to make extension of 466 so it doesn't sunset on multi-year?
I think that would be an absolutely great legislative proposal, as Bonnie was suggesting that the board should be proactive, not reactive. That should be one of them.
To see the principal one maybe rethought out, so there's evaluation of it, but I'd like to include that in that.
Well, I think some, I agree with you, Ruth, and some form of principal training is going to be very important as we go along in further reform, so I've heard good things about it, maybe, I mean, not for now, but.
Absolutely.
If you understand the principle, AB75, and how effective it is, and we'll keep that conversation going.
And I just want you to know, there is a form of evalu, it doesn't, it isn't tied to a performance evaluation, but the Gates Foundation, along with Cessosa, the county, are running an evaluation of AB75. So there is some measure of effectiveness, and we can look to refine that.
So we should see that.
Absolutely.
And on that point, I think for, for this Ruth, that Ruth and Ray and Secretary Riordan are strategizing all sorts of approaches to more principal leadership and principal accountability and principal training and all of that.
Okay, thank you for everyone's comments on that item, and we are on to item 35. We're getting close, everybody. Thank you for your patience. What are we on, number, Gate?
Good afternoon. My name is Phila Fontaine. I'm the administrator of the Mass Science Leadership Office, which administers the Gate program. Today, what we're bringing to you is proposals from districts for you to approve. Head code requires that all LEAs new to Gate and all LEAs who have expired approval submit applications to us. They're reviewed according to the State Board recommended standards, which is included in your packet. They are, these applications are required to have SVE approval before they can be enacted. We have approximately 800 districts that are participating in the Gate program. 409 have been previously approved by pass boards for periods of one, two, or excuse me, two, three, and five years. This year, we have 360 districts so far that are being recommended for periods of one, two, and three. We have 25, which is the largest number we've ever had, who are being recommended for five years and will require a visit from CDE. We approximately have 408,000 students in the Gate program, which amounts to about 6.6% of our total student population, and this funding will give approximately $8.67 per student for the districts to use to fund their Gate programs.
$8.
And 67 cents, approximately.
Do we, do we have any comment on this at all? Okay, all right. All those in favor? Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, on to item 37. Marta, are you here?
36 was taken out.
Okay, thank you. Item 37 is the determinations of funding that are coming from the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools for the 2003, '04, and beyond, and 2004, '05, and beyond-based charters. You can see attached a listing of the schools. There are three schools that came late to the party, and we found this by an analysis of their fiscal statements, and so they were invited in the beginning of this year to provide the information. And how this happens is, the rule in 740 is that if you more than 20% non-classroom based, then you have to go through the commission's review. And these schools were right on that bubble. One came in at 21.5, another at 22, so they hadn't anticipated that they would be running a non-classroom-based program. So we contacted them when we found this in June and invited them to the first meeting of the year, and they submitted all their financial paperwork, and they were fine. They were recommended at 100%. There are two that were recommended at 100% for this current year, and then there was a group of seven, or 10 charters run by Options for Youth and Opportunities for Learning that were recommended at 70% for this year.
Want to take public comment first?
Yes. Go ahead. My name is Joan Hall, and I am here with Jo Budenholtzer on behalf of Options for Youth and Opportunities for Learning Charter Schools. Jo is the Chief Financial Officer for Options for Youth. These 10 schools serve approximately 25,000 at-risk students, typically ethnic and low-income teenagers in danger of dropping out of school and society. Over the past 20 years, we have developed an academic recovery program designed to educate and return students to a traditional high school or move them toward a high school diploma from our program. Our record speaks for itself. 40% of our students return to a traditional school and 10% graduate with us. My husband and I have been fulfilling this mission for more than 20 years. While we're here to discuss funding, I think it is important to keep our focus on the students and how funding issues relate to them. This year, all 10 of our schools have met the necessary requirements for 100% funding as established under Senate Bill 740. Specifically, and in accordance with Senate Bill 740, we now have at least 50% of our revenue dedicated to paying certificated employees. At least, may I use John Hall's time and continue?
If you want to take the other two minutes, sure, and do it all at once.
Yes.
So she'll.
At least 80% of our funding goes to instruction and instructional materials, and we meet the student-teacher ratio requirements. Additionally, there are other factors that we believe support our request for 100% funding. Number one, we serve a heavily ethnic and low-income population that has a demonstrated need for our schools. These students deserve the same educational opportunity as all other California students. Funding them at a lower level than other similarly situated students negatively impacts the quality of their education. Two, we have a waiting list of over 4,000 students. Three, our schools have been developed over a period of two decades and are effective in returning students to traditional schools and moving them toward graduation. Four, all 10 of our charters have clean audits, and we have complied with all other requests from state and local officials. We spend 18% more on instruction than similarly situated public schools, according to the Small Schools Study, on which Senate Bill 740 requirements were based. Five, all 10 charters are WASC-accredited. Six, we have the support of our sponsoring districts. Despite all this and the fact we meet all Senate Bill 740 guidelines for 100% funding this year. May I just continue?
Just wrap it up quickly, please.
We have been recommended for 70% funding for all 10 of our charters. As a charter school operator, I am here today to ask the State Board to bring order and fairness to a process that needs clear, unambiguous, and known objective standards so that due process rights. process rights are assured. We are asking you to approve 100% funding for our schools so that we can expand access to more at-risk students in need of a high school diploma. With 100% funding, we will be able to enhance the quality and types of services and opportunities for these students and teachers.
Thank you very much.
May I continue?
We really do have to keep going. We have your comments. Maybe you have some board comments here, and we can go along some of the board having a discussion about this. Reed, you want to jump in?
I was going to let the superintendent lead on this one. It was actually the superintendent and I and others who got this original bill in SB 740 to address the particular cases. And what we find in non-classroom-based charters is a variety of educational approaches and a variety of expenditure plans. There were a number of concerns that in a non-classroom situation, some operators could spend fairly little and take home a lot. And it was a case-by-case basis. And so the law that got passed, SB 740, set that up. We set up the Advisory Committee on Charter Schools to go through line-item budgets. Jonathan's been through hours and hours of this, you know, item by item, and it's ultimately what they come up with are these recommendations on these items. Any operator who's cut, you know, $1,500 per ADA is not happy with it. So, you know, I think you'll see a persistent pattern here in that objection to being cut. But it is a recommendation of the group that then spent the many hours on this. And I'll defer questions to Jonathan, who might have even recommended some of this. Did you hear some of these, or had you already become a State Board member?
I didn't hear the current case, but there were the recommendations for 70% in years past, and I think it was due in the past. And I can only speak to the past, I can't talk about the current, only because I'm not as close to it. Maybe Marta can fill it in on the current issue. But in terms of the thresholds that were set by, recommended by the Advisory Commission and approved by this board, in terms of how much money is allocated towards the instructional program, and those thresholds early on weren't being met. And we did note some progress before my coming onto this board.
Is it fair to say that the process is fairly exhaustive in its analysis?
It's very thorough, and the department staff does great work in making sure that we're looking at apples to apples on those applications.
And isn't most of the commission actual charter school people, so that it's a very charter-friendly group in terms of?
Sycophants was the word you were looking at.
Exactly. So it's definitely.
But maybe she can address the rationale if they met the requirements of 740 and their audits were clean. Was it the instructional percentage? What was the determination made on?
In the.
I can summarize the main concerns that we had.
Can I interrupt just for a moment? I'm sorry, Marta, to do this, but I would like to hear from legal counsel with respect to having a delineation of where they've fallen short outside of the process that's required by statute. Karen, do you have a comment on this?
Yes, the board has regulations on this process, and part of the regulations is that after the Advisory Commission meeting, that the charter school applicants who are recommended for less than 100% funding are to receive the reasons in writing as to why the full funding wasn't recommended. And they're supposed to be given 30 days to amend their application at that point, to explain, to fill in the blanks, and to improve it. Because we're trying to get at the beginning of the year and things were done rapidly, this charter school, these seven or 10, were not given that opportunity. And so we would propose that the department, there was some exchange of questions and answers, but it didn't provide for the 30 days. And so we would suggest that the department provide the applicants with specific reasons in writing, give them the 30 days in order to reply, and bring it back to the November Board. Oh, we did discuss with the applicants, they could be approved at the 70% level now and ask for redetermination at the November Board, and I think that is their desire.
Now, that we would follow those regs and do it in writing for the benefit of the charter school, and then it'll be back on your agenda in November. But you could consider this, and I would recommend that you consider the 70% approval now.
Is that consistent with what we should approve at 70% now and then argue the rest later? Okay. Then I'd like to move the staff recommendation.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. We have 38. Marta, you're on again. Again.
I've asked Deborah Connolly to join me on this. These regulations have been long in the creation and making, and Deborah was here long before I was, and so has been working on them over time. So we're going to team this in an effort to provide you information and be able to respond to your questions.
And if I might just add, we're going to be referring to the regs that are in your packet, they're white, the ones that went out in your original board agenda.
Right. And the ones that you are getting now have some minor changes to them that mostly reflect some of the comments of the Charter School Advisory Commission members. And so there are probably about three changes that I should just walk you through so you know where they are. On your original document, on page three, there's an item number seven, which discusses a demonstrated success in operating other charter schools as one of the things that needs to be described in a petition for a statewide charter. We added some language that, the original language indicated that academic success would be indicated by an API of eight or higher. The Advisory Commission requested some language be put in there that would allow schools in the ASAM Accountability System to also be able to demonstrate academic achievement. And so that's what we've done with the last sentence on that piece there.
Can you tell us the exact language that you're adding? Because it's unclear to me, what page, line, the exact language.
It's on page three, lines, beginning on line 14.
And which language would that be?
That would be the language that says, or other alternative indicators of success as defined in the Alternative Accountability System pursuant to subdivision H of.
What's the blue one?
If you're looking at the.
Okay.
Your original white one.
No, the blue's different.
So, it's, I feel like this is, these regulations are jinxed, but on the original, the white copy that you got with the original board item, it's lines, beginning on lines 14 through 17.
What page?
No, it's incorporated in the blue.
No, it's incorporated in the white.
Okay. Well, what's the change then?
Yeah.
It's the same.
No charter school wins down here.
The white, okay.
For this presentation, can I ask you to disregard the blue? Let's work off the white copy, and we'll give you any corrections or additions to that. Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Thank you.
He had told me we would do. So that's very.
So we are disregarding the blue. Okay. Do not look at the blue. We are now on the white. You just look at it, and we will go.
Can I?
Okay.
Can I race through this item for us? We're supposed to, this is sponsoring more high-quality charters, is the idea under it. And it was done two years ago, and when we did, the tightening up of local charters. So we said, let's not have these long-distance charters, where a little district in the Sierra has charter schools in LA. Let's make sure that it's local-only. But for the charters that have a legitimate interest to operate statewide, let's give them an avenue where they can apply to the State Board and operate statewide. So that's what these regs are about. And as was referred to, it's taken two years, because we don't know that many people that are going to do this, and there may be no one who goes through this process. It may be a while, it may be one or two. It certainly is a pretty small number. So it hasn't been on the front burner, but it is good to move these forward. I'd like to make, I don't know, three or four very minor changes in them, if I can give all of you those. I'll just do them for the record. Page three, line 11 on the white, this has previously approved by a local school district or county governing board, but it might have been by the State Board. So my suggestion is that it just says "approved in California," and strikes "by a local school district or county governing board." The line below that, line 13, it says "and/or similar schools ranking," and it should just say "or," so that there's clarity in interpreting the regs. Does it mean "and" or does it mean "or"? It means "or." Next one is probably a typo on page four, line 23. It says "the state, comma, or to the extent applicable," and I think it's meant to say "the state to the extent applicable," and just cross off the word "or." Next one is line 26, striking "or operational." The idea of these is to get operational benefits, in other words, to operate better. So what this would then say is, it's a description of the administrative benefit is not in and of itself to constitute a statewide benefit. And then there's a conforming grammatical change, which is just striking the word "neither" on the front of that paragraph. Next is page five, line 17, and it's just striking "the adequacy and appropriateness." So it then would say, "CDE shall evaluate the facilities," since it's ambiguous what adequacy and appropriateness means, and opens up a can of worms there. And again, this is just sending them out for regs, and we begin the process of collecting comments. We'll have a chance to come back to these, you know, several times over the next couple months.
Actually, and you know, I really would like to understand the change on number two, line 26 on page four. I still don't quite understand the application of that for the state charters.
It's a great question. The principle under this is, things that don't benefit the students by being statewide shouldn't come up to a statewide level. In other words, if it's sharing payroll, you know, that's nice or whatever, but that's not a big enough reason to stay, to go statewide instead of a number of local charters. But if there are operational benefits, like a better teacher training program, a better professional development, more, better technology development, those are the kinds of things that we all seek to have these organizations do. And so what this is saying is, a mere description of administrative benefit doesn't justify a statewide charter. But I'm suggesting that a description of operational benefit, i.e. better instructional program, should justify it, because that's exactly the case we're looking for.
Reed, just to be clear, would you tell us on that line?
It would then say, "a description of administrative benefit to a charter operator." So then I'd like to move those regs as amended.
I would just like to apologize for the confusion. I know it was a little messy.